Extremely difficult and challenging experience.
I agree. Natalie, with it now being five minutes after the hour, I know we still have two of our candidates that were waiting to join us, but would you like me to go ahead and get things kicked off? All right. So first of all, good morning to everyone on the call. I appreciate you joining us this morning on the first day of fall. It is actually starting to feel like fall here in Wilmington. I grew up in upstate New York, so fall to me always reminds me of school time. So that is, I think we've got the perfect group of candidates here today for our September Public Policy Meeting. For those of you that I haven't had a chance to meet yet, my name is Michelle Holbrook. When I am not doing things with the Chamber, I have been working for Corning Incorporated for 25 years. I had the absolute pleasure of being the former plant manager of the optical fiber plant that we have here in Wilmington for five years, and I have now moved into a global supply chain role, but thankfully I get to be based out of Wilmington. From a Chamber of Commerce standpoint, I am the first vice chair this year, and I am also the chair of the Public Policy Meeting. So that is why you get to listen to me talk with our candidates this morning. I would like to welcome, hopefully eventually, all six of the candidates to the New Hanover Board of Education. Right now, I know we've got four of them with us on the call, and hopefully two more will be able to join shortly. And over the next hour, we'll all get a chance to get to know them better. On behalf of the Chamber, I would also like to thank all of our co-hosting organizations today, the Cape Fear Realtors, Wilmington Cape Fear Home Builders Association, Greater Wilmington Business Journal, and BASE. And then before I go into the format for today's meeting, I want to first turn things over to Natalie English, our CEO of the Chamber, for a few announcements. Natalie?
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning.
You know, we are so only a few weeks away from a major election in our country. And so this is certainly one way that you can learn about our candidates. You can join us again in October for our Public Policy Committee meeting to learn about the State House candidates in our area. And there will be another opportunity in October to hear from our State Senate and our county commission candidates. And you can join the Greater Wilmington Business Journal's Biz Expo in just a week to learn about our US Senate candidates. So be sure to take advantage of all those opportunities. Coming up soon, MED Week, Minority Enterprise Development Week, is a big partnership of all of us who support minority-owned businesses. UNC Wilmington, the CIE, and others have put together a week's worth of programming, which is up from only a day and a half last year and the several years prior to that. So it's exciting to be able to offer that kind of programming to help grow businesses in our community. That starts on October 5th for the entire week. Even Saturday morning, you can find some programming. Our 40 Under 40 Award Recognition Event is on October 22nd. Stay tuned, it's going to be a dynamic and exciting opportunity to honor 40 amazing young people in our community. So I encourage you to join us for that event and get your gift bag of celebratory items so that you can celebrate with the award winners from your home or office. And then finally, yesterday, the county commission met. They talked about what will be a new community foundation with priorities for investing in our community, $1.2 billion community foundation, spending $25 to $50 million a year, not touching the principal of that foundation. Now, that can only happen if we have a successful partnership with Novant Health, UNC Health, and UNC Medical School. The Partnership Advisory Group and the Hospital Board have supported this partnership. To date, the county commission has, a majority have, supported moving forward with this partnership. There's a public hearing on Monday evening at 5:00. Encourage you to go and speak, especially if you're in support, at least from my perspective. But then the vote will be on October 5th, and it could be the beginning of some amazing things for our region. Not only that foundation that I spoke about, but also healthcare access across our entire region to a great system of healthcare that we've had access to here in New Hanover County. It will get out to more people in the region, better facilities, more facilities. It's going to be an exciting partnership, more jobs. Right now, New Hanover Regional Medical Center employs 7,500 people, and you can expect that that will grow. So I encourage you to support the partnership as the Chamber is doing and to show up for that public hearing on Monday and pay attention to the vote on October 5th. Michelle, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. So let's jump into the content for today's meeting. And our format is quite simple. This is not a debate. We are here to really just to get to know our candidates and hear what matters to them. So we have provided them in advance a series of questions. Given our limited amount of time, we've given them five questions, and it's going to feel a little bit like speed dating with these five questions. They each have one minute to answer the question. Part of why it was really important that they have it, the questions in advance, they can be really thoughtful about the real meat of the question that we're trying to understand. At the end of that minute, Stephanie is going to sound a little bell to let them know that the minute's up, but we'll give them another 15 or so seconds to wrap up any concluding thoughts. If it goes beyond that, then I get to jump in. But I know especially with these folks and their passion on education, they're all about following the rules, so I don't think I'm going to have to do that too much. In addition to the five questions, we'll also have time at the end for each of them to give us about a two-minute closing statement. And that's meant to be broad so that they can answer it in any way possible to share with us a little more about themselves than maybe our questions aren't allowing us to understand. So I'm going to refrain from long introductions. As they answer the questions, you'll get to know more about them, and I encourage you to visit their websites. I'm sure Megan will post that information in the chat bar, so you can go out there and learn even more about their background. So quick introductions of the candidates with us today, and I think we're still awaiting one of them. But we have Stephanie Craybill, Pastor Tony McGee, Hugh McManus, Chris Meek, hopefully will be joining soon, Stephanie Walker, and Pete Wilderbohr. So welcome to all six of you. It is an absolute pleasure to have you with us today. And in the interest of time, I'm going to try to stop talking and allow you a chance to start talking. We're going to rotate through the questions, actually in alphabetical order, and we'll shift one side each time, so you each have a chance to answer a question first, and you each will have a chance to answer a question last. So starting in alphabetical order, that means Stephanie Craybill, you get to go first. And our first question today is, well, I'm sure there are probably several educational priorities on the list of items that you'll want to address if you're elected. What one thing is the biggest challenge facing New Hanover County and our schools? And how do you plan to address it? Stephanie?
Thank you for having me here today. I think it was a trip to get us up early and get started. I see that there are several equally challenging and interlaced issues, so I have to kind of mix them all into one in my answer. We need to keep our kids moving forward academically and keep our teachers and our kids emotionally whole while we're navigating through this myriad of COVID constrictions. I think getting our kids back to face-to-face instruction is our ultimate goal, but we have to do it when it is safe to do so. So we need to ensure that our teachers are well-trained to deliver virtual instruction and that they are physically and emotionally solid in doing that. Parents and caregivers and school and family support systems, they have to jump into high gear right now and work with the teachers to keep the kids engaged in their lessons. Well, first of all, they have to make sure the kids have access to their lessons. And then they just have to do more frequent, I think, informal assessments to see where their kids are and to see if they are actually mastering the content that is being put forth.
Great. Stephanie, thank you very much. Tony?
Well, again, you know, to repeat what Stephanie said, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I think the biggest challenge facing New Hanover County during this time is what do we do in the midst of this COVID crisis? And one of the things I think is important, of course, we have to listen to the professionals and healthcare professionals and so forth. And something else that's going on is they're talking about some of the problems, sort of mental health, mental health problems that comes along with people being shut down and separated. So I think we have to, in my estimation, the greatest problem facing New Hanover County right now is how we balance between safely opening schools, keeping them closed, as a matter of fact, and opening so that we don't have, worse thing could happen, mental health and socialization type of problems that some of the experts are talking about is actually already occurring. So we have to, as Stephanie said, we've got to move forward with caution. But I believe we do have to move forward, and we have to move forward with the safety and health of our kids and our educators in mind.
Thank you, Tony. Next up is Hugh, and for those of you that joined earlier, you might have heard some of us talking about it. I know he would love to be on video right now, so we could all see him. Unfortunately, we had some video connections, but thankfully we'll be able to hear him. So Hugh, how would you answer that question?
Good morning. Thank you, and I'll do my best not to be repetitive. I really believe that our learning gap in our diverse elementary schools is, and I quote, massive. And this was before the pandemic. There was an article in the Port City Daily about SNipes, which indicated that 38% of the kindergarten students at SNipes did not have the expected skill level. At the state average, it's 50%, and too many, that is, were two to three grade levels behind. Why we should look at data-driven, successful programs, the board should, to use in trying to close this learning gap or at least stop it first. I support this unusual continuation where the school is taking to the students. SNipes teachers went to the homes, they picked up the work they had, they left more work. They worked with the students, they worked with the parents, particularly in the technology arena to try to develop what I would call a comfort technology zone. They indicated to their students and parents, I feel that in the community, how much they valued their education and generally how much they cared about their students by doing that. What I think they did that was paramount to attacking this diversity gap in all lower socioeconomic students is they secured the county and private business support for remote locations. They got free Wi-Fi. So they accomplished the key variables, county, business, and community partnership. I really believe that is the key. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Hugh. Stephanie Walker?
Hi, thank you for having me. Like I said, I'll probably be ready in about, probably an hour, but anyway. So yeah, besides the COVID stuff that we're dealing with, which is obviously the pressing issue at the moment, and obviously the safety issues with the child abuse stuff, those are two huge challenges. But beyond that, you know, speaking back to what you said, the learning gap, especially the kindergarten readiness gaps that I've noticed in our schools. So to me, equity in schools is a huge concern. You know, policy change back in 2010 really kind of made those gaps larger. So I really want to look at closing the kindergarten readiness gaps. I mean, like I said, between the two schools, I mean, I compare Parsley and Freeman, they're six and a half miles apart, but the gap is so much more. I mean, for example, Freeman has like a 5% kindergarten, you know, their kindergarteners are ready to go in compared to Parsley, which is above the 80%. So I mean, it's a huge difference, and we've got to close that. But also getting children ready for the workforce. I took the college path, and so did my daughter, but my husband's a landscaper, so I mean, there's room for everybody. And so I really hope that we can focus on identifying early what children need. You know, whether that's, you know, identify, I know when I was in elementary, we took little tests to find out what our aptitudes were. But you know, every kid's different, and so they're going to take different paths, and it's okay. You know, they all can be successful. And you know, we're entrepreneurs too, my husband and I, so you know, there's that component as well. There's so many avenues, and we're going to grow so, so fast coming up here in the next, you know, 25 years, according to our plans.
All right, Stephanie, I think we must have hit the one-minute mark. Pete, you are up next. Oh, you're still muted, Pete, so if you want to go ahead and go off of mute, so we can hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
I can. Yep, so we'll go ahead and have Megan start the timer now that we got you off mute.
Okay, well, again, thank you very much for this time this morning, very early in the morning, but we're excited to be here. And very simply, my paramount point, key point has always been student safety. Student safety, faculty safety, during this time, obviously, we need to be very cautious as we return to school. But I think it is very, very vital that we go back to school for just a paramount, just for a variety of reasons. I think student safety from internal, from external, there's been a lot of talk about SROs. Do we keep SROs? Do we get rid of SROs? I think SROs are extremely important. I think it's extremely important that we keep our students safe from internal, external, from the pandemic. So we've looked at, my committee's looked at, even thinking of, thinking outside of the box and looking at things like germicidal, ultraviolet. Hospitals use that to protect their patients, to clean. I think that's very, very important. So just keeping our students safe. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Pete. And Stephanie Walker, I apologize. I must not have heard the bell when Megan set it off after your one minute to let you know you had a 20-second warning left, so I apologize for that. All right, so now we move on to our second question, which we will start with Pastor McGee on this one, and then continue to rotate in the order we just did. So 2020 has been such an unusual year, driven in large part by the global pandemic that originated in Wuhan, China. As a potential member of the Board of Education, how would you advocate for the needs of our students during this unprecedented pandemic? Pastor McGee?
I think one of the first things I'd think about, of course, when we remember that all students come from different socioeconomic backgrounds and so forth, and we need to ensure that all students have access to the technological platforms that are available in education, and that would include even some of the things that I see that were being done at Laney was, you know, students could have access to their own laptop to continue their work for virtual and so forth. And I think one of the other things to do is to begin to infuse the education process into the critical thinking kind of processes, because you know, that can transcend every socioeconomic barrier, just learning how to think, how to ask, answer questions, have a conversation in your head when you're learning some new information. And of course, it's a great benefit in school of the nutritional programs that are there, whether it's breakfast or lunch. And I think even in the midst of this, we've seen this happen, but we need to make sure that students are still being provided with proper nutrition, so that hunger does not hinder the learning process. So I think those two things are important things, I think, during a pandemic. So we don't get so worked up with the emotional, we have to think through things and also provide for those students that are properly nourished.
All right, sorry, I think I'm having audio issues.
Okay.
Up there. All right, were you finished? I thought I heard a bell, so I, okay. All right, whenever my computer does something in the background, my headset goes out, so I apologize. All right, the next up on this question then is Hugh.
Thank you. There is a little loss of voice in and out, so. I agree with Mr. McGee in several of his points, and I appreciate it, but I will not be repetitive. I believe there are basic needs for all students when it comes to online classes. Teacher consistency in their style, in their routines, office contact hours, and in particular, be aware where possibly a student has a personal or family issue. And I know that parents are being encouraged to contact teachers to please share those issues. I believe that positive student recognitions and involvement definitely helps develop a comfort zone for students. Board must be advocating every day for students. They must work with, of course, the federal state, and in particular, our local government for funding needs. And we must be providing the best technology, we must look and achieve and bring the best programs available. We must make sure our teachers and our staff have all the needed, cutting-edge resources, and of course, the training, as we mentioned. Teachers should feel comfortable, they should feel like they can contact counselors or mental health workers, social workers, school nurses for any student that they feel may need that support. And I also think the counselors ought to be involved in some of the lessons to inject the handling of that stress, to ask questions, and/or where to contact, as well as parents, if anything needs to be discussed.
All right, thank you, Hugh. All right, next is Stephanie Walker.
Hi, thank you. I've got my timer started now, so hopefully I'll be better this time. Well, obviously, we're, you know, we're talking a lot about food insecurities lately and the tech issues that have been a challenging thing. Like I said, the positive thing about that is maybe we can, you know, we can plan for this in the future and get better at, you know, at these things, because there were a lot of issues with internet connectivity and, you know, there's kind of places in our town that don't have access to tech. I know the school systems have tried really hard to work with that. I was at the meeting last night, and they were talking about how they've gotten a lot of their, they've got a new shipment of iPads, and so they're trying to address all these issues and fill in the gaps. Another thing I think that doesn't get talked about enough are, you know, meeting the needs socially and emotionally. I'm a big believer in resiliency. I went through a lot as a kid, and I know, you know, this is the most important time right now, teaching our kids resiliency, because, you know, we're all going through this, the whole world is going through this. I can't even get a flight to the UK where my family is right now, or probably be quarantined. So everyone's dealing with it, and it's hard on everybody, and kids look to their parents for this. We have to set an example also and really teach our kids that resiliency is very important. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, Stephanie. Pete?
I think it's the technology, I think we need to look at technology as a whole, and I think we need to look at even other counties around us. Pender County is 1-on-1, 1-2-1, excuse me, for all our students, and I think we need to get to that for all our students. And I think, you know, this is one of those things that, yes, it's tough, it's, you know, very difficult for the students, it's very difficult for the faculties, but we can learn from this. We can take the technology that we're learning, we can do things like flip classrooms. So we know, we do need to have a planned place to catch up after this is all over. You know, some of our students, you know, you look at, you think of our kindergarten students that are not in school yet and really have not been in school, that the kindergarteners from last year that had half a year of school. We need those students even more than the rest of students, all our students need to catch up. You know, it's been devastating for all our students, but I really think we need to focus, even the governor. I was very appreciative of his statement the other day that our elementary schools need to go back and probably even, as I said, thank you, even even more than everyone else, just because they need to learn those basic rudimentary foundations for education. So thank you.
Yep, thank you, Pete. And Stephanie Craybill? Oh, you're still muted, Stephanie.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to keep myself quiet over here. First of all, I think that one of the best things that we can do to advocate for the needs of our students is to form and maintain strong and healthy relationships with our local officials, our business leaders, our business partners, and the community in general, so that they know what the actual needs are in our schools and not just what they suppose them to be. So with that, we need to share our strategic plan and our budget requests with the people that have the means to provide us with funding and with human capital, you know, in our school buildings when it is safe for them to do so. So I think we should invite these leaders and our community members and ourselves into the schools so that we can see what's going on, we can work alongside the teachers and the administrators and the students just to get a feel for what our schools are all about. I learned so much as a substitute teacher about, you know, with just, you know, kids having, not having pencils. So I think that we could use committees in the school system, like our All Hands on Deck, which we're developing to bring in businesses, continue to use PTAs, PTOs, parent support organizations, churches, faith-based organizations, to really advocate for what our kids need. And then also, so, sorry.
That's time. Yep, that's time. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, and Megan, I'm not sure, I don't keep hearing the bell at the one-minute mark, so I don't know if there's a way to try to improve that process for our candidates.
Yeah, let me see if I can get my video back on, and maybe we can move to a more visual process, as Stephanie had suggested, because I'm ringing my bell.
Your video's on, so, okay, I'm not hearing it. Is anybody else hearing the bell at the minute mark?
I mean, like, Megan, can you do something like this that says 10 seconds?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
But I can hold something up?
Hold something up, yeah, so that we know.
I don't know that everybody will see that, though, but if you're not on gallery view, but just saying.
All right, so I apologize for not enough kind of audio, because we don't want to do too much to interrupt your words that you're saying to all of us, but we'll have Megan hold something up, so if you know how to go into gallery view, that's probably going to be the best way for you to be able to see her. All right, well, we are now going to move on to question three, and Hugh will get a chance to answer this one first. So one of the most important topics for our community right now is the negotiation that's underway between our county, New Hanover Regional Medical Center, and Novant Health. Natalie talked earlier at the beginning of this that that negotiation has the potential to create a community foundation with over $1 billion in funds. And that could just be simply transformational for our county. What educational opportunities would you advance with that foundation funding? Hugh?
Well, with the potential for $1.2 billion from a community foundation, this county, that's going to attract a lot of requests for a lot of, that are in need. Our school board and superintendent, I would like to see make every effort to prioritize as early as possible our priorities and our cost and where we are placing our resources so that the county commissioners and that board understand why we are going to them to seek funding. I'm a big advocate for, which I think is a major high priority, a joint workforce development program, which we have one already with Cape Fear, but I'd like to see one in the high schools. I believe we could increase our collaboration with the community college, their board, and our business and industry that have been so supportive, and also supported the elementary students. There is now, and I think there will continue to be, a strong need for individuals who've been trained in the technical and vocational arenas, that's where the jobs appear, that they're going to be a strong opportunity. So funding for workforce programs is my, would be my priority on this foundation, because they're going to be hit so hard. But they also need to see where we have placed our resources.
All right, thank you, Hugh.
Thank you.
Stephanie Walker, how about you?
Thank you. Well, gosh, so much. Obviously, I believe education needs to be a top priority, because I think it all begins with your education and in terms of, you know, your success in life and whether or not you can, you know, be a consumer and be a, you know, a good civic citizen. So I'm very much about educational spending. Top priorities for me, I believe, is we definitely need to build more schools, because we are past capacity. My daughter went to Laney, I think there were 2,500 kids at the time, and that's way over capacity. So we really need to look into building more physical space. Expansion of pre-K is a huge thing for me, because I think, you know, that early foundation education is so important, and we're going to shrink the readiness gap, kindergarten readiness gap, I'm trying to talk so fast. Money towards, obviously, workforce development, because like I said, everybody's on a different track, all kids are different. So I really think that we could work on things like scholarships, apprenticeships, whatever it takes to fit the need for the kid instead of making the kid fit the school system. So yeah, I got it in a minute.
All right. Pete, what are your thoughts?
Well, I do agree with Ms. Walker. I think that the pre-K is huge. I mean, that's just an area that we really need, you know, we need to bring all our students up so that they can start school and feel successful, you know. I think that student success is huge. I think that pre-K program brings them up so they can feel good to begin with. You know, we've seen all the data that shows that if you can't read by third grade, you're going to be behind the rest of your life, so I think it's huge. So that would be my number one priority. Obviously, I think it's going to be a huge amount of money, so we need to reach out, we need to, you know, roll up our sleeves together and go to, you know, and get that funding for education. I think that's going to be huge. Other areas, just quickly, I think nutrition, continuing to support the nutritional programs. And then as we've, I don't want to hit again the workforce, but I mean, that's huge again, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Pete. Stephanie Craybill, what are your thoughts on how we use that $1.2 billion? Up, yep, go off and mute. We'll wait for you to go off mute before Megan starts the timer.
You're on mute, babe.
Still muted. Still muted.
Oh, no. There we go.
How that worked?
Wild cursor that's going errant. Okay, so this is what I would like to see us use that money for. Um, I would like to see us support education-related nonprofit organizations, um, like Communities in Schools, which is a leading dropout prevention program, um, whose mission is to help build relationships, um, with students and to help them have the skills to succeed in life. I would like to see, um, organizations like TAC, you know, Thailing Children's Association and Dreams and Kids Making It, um, funded so that kids who need a more, um, artistic outlet, you know, can express themselves and learn um, social skills and business skills, all while they're creating art. Um, I think that we need to do a little more, um, support the resiliency task force so that more people in our community are trained on the trauma, um, trauma-based, trauma-informed community. Um, I would like to see us bring in speakers and touring groups from around the country to educate kids about real-world, social, civic, and scientific issues, possibly with hands-on opportunities as well. Kids need to see what's out there in the world and they need to see what they can aspire to.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Pastor Mickey, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think, um, I mean, I would strongly advocate for the infusion of critical thinking in the, in the education process. When I say that, I'm not talking about a curriculum. I'm talking about a way of actually exposing kids to education, where they're actually thinking about things, asking questions, having a conversation about it. I think a lot of education now kind of, kind of taxed towards memorization and taking a test. So many students are getting left behind, I think, because they're not really learning how to think. And so this is very problematic when a person is saying, hey, I'm going to move into a particular vocational area, workforce area, or for higher education. If they can't really problem solve on their, on their own, and I think that's going to be an important process. And, and of course, um, the other thing I would do in the workforce environment of what we used to call vocational tech. I think that needs to be brought back into high school and, and actually so that, that, that by the time somebody graduates from high school, if they decide, not that they can't go to college, but they don't want to go to college, that they can actually begin to take those basic skills and move into whatever area that, that would be, construction, electronics or whatever. Because, um, there's a lot of money to be made and, and we get these educations so that we can take care of ourselves and our families. And I think that would be a good way to begin to funnel some of that money to make sure kids from all paths and walks and desires.
All right. Thank you, Tony. All right. We are now going to move on to question four and, uh, I think all of you have touched on this subject a little bit throughout the morning, uh, but a little more focused on it. Um, just as some background as to why I think this is an important question, um, I told you I had the plant to be, chance to be the plant manager at the Corning and here for five years. Uh, that plant actually first opened in 1966 and it opened as an electronic resistor plant. And then in the late 1970s, Corning transitioned it to an optical fiber facility. Um, since 1966, it's had cutting-edge manufacturing happening there in College Road. Whether it was cutting-edge for 1966, cutting-edge for the 1970s, or now that we're in 2020, um, the product that it makes there, optical fiber, it enables what we're doing right now, Zoom calls. It enables telemedicine and remote learning. Um, and all of that is only possible because of a trained workforce at all levels, engineers, operators on the floor, technicians maintaining the equipment. Um, and so my question to you is, as a school board member, what are you going to do to enhance workforce development at all levels? And question number four, we start with Stephanie Walker.
Hi, I am muted. Um, I'm gonna start my timer. Okay, so I remember growing up here in Wilmington that Corning was the job to have because they paid the best and everybody wanted the Corning job. So I just want to say that. Um, as far as addressing the workforce, again, equity, uh, closing the equity gaps are going to be huge because that opens up a lot more people to, um, realizing, you know, the dream of having a good job, especially like at places like Corning where they really take care of you. Um, you know, but as an MPAer also, I realize that you have to start off with a strong strategic plan. And I know there's one getting ready to be renewed here soon. Hopefully, the new board will be able to do that because we're going to have so many people coming into the area. We're going to have to look at, you know, what is going to be needed with the influx of people. Um, but like I said, equity issue, identifying the skills that are going to be needed coming up in the next 25 years is going to be key uh, to knowing where we want to go as far as workforce development is concerned. And like I've always said, I know everybody goes on different paths, um, in life. And so we need to identify those that have stronger skills and say, you know, landscaping and, you know, other things, not just college. Thank you.
All right. Pete, how about your thoughts?
This is really, uh, near and dear to my heart. My father, uh, was a mechanic all his life. Um, Pete's Garage, he owned Pete's Garage. Uh, I have dear friends that work at GE and Corning. Um, one of my best friends actually worked at Corning for many years. Um, so I think this is extremely important that we, we support C-Tech. We have things like the GE program. Uh, one of my, uh, very close friend's, uh, sons, uh, went through a GE program and was able to get some techno, 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 I can't speak this morning, techno, uh, some support, some, some training. Uh, so he was able to, to work. Uh, so I think this is very, very important. I think we need to look at every avenue we can support. Uh, you know, financially, we need to uh, do partnerships as we've talked about, uh, with GE, with Corning. Um, you know, so I think we just need to look at everything we can do to support our students. Uh, give them every opportunity to go in any direction that they want to educationally. Uh, whether it be through college, whether it be through, uh, community college, whether it be through, uh, going right out into the workforce. We need to prepare our students for that. Uh, my old superintendent, uh, in Pender County actually was devising a program where students would be trained to drive buses and then, uh, the, the county would actually pay for that, uh, because there was such a need for bus drivers. So, um, again, I think we need to, uh, support our students, know that, let them know that we care about them and, uh,
All right. Thank you, Megan. Sorry, I, I wasn't doing a good job as a timekeeper. All right. Stephanie Crayville?
Okay, I'm unmuted, ready to go.
You are up next and you're unmuted. So go ahead.
So first of all, I noticed the need, um, for a career and technical more programs by volunteering in the schools, um, at the elementary, middle, and high school level, where kids were just talking about that they didn't want to go to college. Um, they didn't think they were ready or they didn't think they had the aptitude. So those are separate issues. But, so I began, you know, advocating for a career and technical school. And in 2015, I was invited to be on the work team that created and rolled out, um, C-Tech High School, um, in conjunction with K-Fire Community College. And that was just eye-opening, enlightening, and so much fun. We have to continue to fund, um, as best we can and lobby for more funding to keep that school going. Um, as long, and as well as a career readiness academy at Mosley where business is the focus. I think that we need to create business partnerships, like I said before, that, but not only just for the money. We can't just keep putting our hands out. We, we, we really need these companies to do some job shadowing, some internships, some apprenticeships, um, mentoring opportunities for our students. We have Lunch and Learn, which I was happy to, um, help with at Hoggard, where you bring business people in, where they can just have casual conversations with students about what it, what their job means and what it takes to get there and to share their experiences. Yeah, I hated math too, but I had to do it. And then I'd also like to see career and technical exploratory classes expanded into the middle schools.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Great job. Tony, you are up next, sir.
Okay, thanks so much. I mean, you know, there's a lot of talk about the school is kind of like a pathway to prison for many minority students. So one of the things that I think is that so important. Uh, my experience has been critical thinking can not only, um, diminish, uh, equity gaps, but it can also actually remove that. So in other words, if a person is taught the basic foundational discipline of thinking, then they'll learn right off the bat that they can learn just about anything. Maybe somebody else may learn it faster because they have a, a stronger memory. Somebody else may learn it slower. But they'll learn that they can learn it. And of course, this will increase their confidence and their intellectual abilities. And of course, then they'll be able to perform in the real world. And I think, I think that critical thinking skill has to begin in the school, not as a curriculum, but as a way of teaching, uh, children how to learn and how to understand concepts, intellectual concepts, concepts of building, um, different industries and so forth. And I think we'll, we'll, we'll find that the equity gap now begins to shrink because the critical thinking skills have been strengthened.
All right. Thank you, Tony. And, uh, Hugh, what are your thoughts on workforce development?
As I've indicated, I think a little earlier, uh, this is high priority for me. Um, not all students should be four-year college-bound. Uh, we've got a national surplus of college grads. They're, they are unemployed, um, and, and many cannot pay off their college debt. The jobs of the future, again, I, I, I just truly believe will reflect that, that need for vocational and technical training. But by placing programs in our high schools, we can increase our collaborations with the community college and, and the local board and industry and, and work again to build strong joint programs for the high school students so that they're exposed to this before they go and get out of school. Uh, we need more resources to support C-Tech, which is Southeastern Area Technical High School, which was mentioned earlier. And I don't know how many people know, but C-Tech provides an academic, a very rigorous academic-based learning with an opportunity um, to receive industry certification, uh, stackable credentials, which is achieved through, uh, real-world-based training, job training, job shadowing, internships, and I believe it includes apprenticeships. And I think that all of these are requirements for their students. Uh, you know, the one thing we've done well in public school, and I was as guilty as anyone in, asked and convinced students that they were not making the right choice if they were not going to a four-year college. Um,
One year mark, Hugh? One minute mark, sorry.
Done. Yeah, that was done. Sorry. That was over a minute.
Done? Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Sorry, I didn't, all right. All right. All right. So we now move on to our fifth and last uh, question that we have before we'll give our candidates just an open forum to talk with you. Um, and this fifth question is about just how fast, uh, innovation is happening. Mark Twain once said, "To stand still is to fall behind." Um, and that was over a century ago, but it couldn't be more true today. So the question for all of our candidates is, in your opinion, how can New Hanover County schools take advantage of technological changes to advance and improve the education uh, that our children are receiving? And with this fifth question, Pete, we'll start with you.
Great. Thank you. Um, I'm very proud of this, uh, this, this area. Uh, my school that I was at before I retired, we were the number one, uh, elementary school in Pender County. Uh, we, we did things like flip classrooms. And in case you're not familiar with flip classrooms, that's where the majority of the learning, it's kind of like what's, what's going on now. A lot of the learning goes on at home. Uh, the students come in and are supported and, uh, they're able to break into small groups. Um, and, you know, a lot of people say, well, how do you do that if they don't have technology at home? Well, that's, that's one of the key things is they have to have technology at home. Um, I think we need to look at getting a device in every student's hands. I don't know how students can go home with no device, with no internet and be able to do even homework, even the, the, you know, the, the most basic of homework. So I think we need to be able to support all our students through, uh, and just the biggest thing is to take advantage of this whole pandemic and to learn from it and to be able to do a lot of things. I'm sorry, I'm over again. Thank you.
All right. Pete, thank you for your thoughts. Stephanie Crayville?
Oh, my, my, my brain went foggy for a second. The, uh, so first, so I'm, I'm back to the business partnerships again. Is that we live in a community that is thriving with entrepreneur, um, there and businesses like Corning, GE, PPD, Pharma, and, and so many other small businesses and technology businesses. So we need to partner with them and use some of their expertise to maybe train our teachers and show our teachers some innovative ways that they can present lessons and then do the same with the children. Um, at, at Ashley High School, one of their career and technical classes is, um, creating video games. And we all think that video games are bad. Um, and at, at, a lot of times, they, you know, they are, they take too much time. But it gives the children an opportunity to, um, engage in what that game might look like. So I don't know how many of you, um, have seen the movie Hamilton, but wouldn't you have loved, I would have, loved to learn history the Hamilton way, you know, singing songs and dancing? I don't know, this is going to age me tremendously, but what about the old Schoolhouse Rock videos? Conjunction Junction, What's Your Function? And I Am a Bill Sitting Here on Capitol Hill? Those are the kinds of things that, you know, we can let our children, um, develop these kind of programs and teach each other, um, via TikTok.
Thank you, Stephanie. I think that's time. All right. Tony, your thoughts?
Well, um, I think we could take advantage of the technological changes in education by infusing critical thinking skills. And of course, this would, this would contribute to multiple paths toward education. In other words, as a student shows mastery in an area, they could accelerate, uh, their time and shorten their time in high school and move on to other areas because they would be able to have their education virtually. Maybe everybody can't do that. But those that have shown mastery of the subject matter could move on. So it's not just tied to a particular block of time. It's tied to mastery of subject. They can move on, especially those that are, are college-bound. They can accelerate that process. And of course, um, you, you'd have to have systems in place to validate that they've actually mastered the material, some type of, um, uh, essay-oriented type of testing instead of just taking a test. I think many times, you know, people master taking a test, but they haven't mastered the subject matter. And I think we can take advantage of the technology by bringing new concepts and ideas for learning into the education process.
All right. Thank you, Tony. And, and Hugh, your thoughts on the question?
Well, I definitely support the flip classroom that Pete mentioned. Um, technology's brought the world to our fingertips. I mean, the virtual classroom has created a plethora of online educational and new interest programs. Um, learning's longer associated with a classroom, uh, or a building. And teachers are no longer just teachers, they're facilitators. The classrooms, our libraries, uh, study, study arenas, they must reflect technology accessibility space. Uh, and for individuals as well, it's small group work. Technology, it, it can engage more students. Uh, it can improve collaboration. Of course, it is the major source for contacts. Uh, and it's also the major source for direct information search. New Hanover County Schools has, has got to remain on the leading edge of technology for all staff and students. Uh, we've got to look at our budget. We've got to, uh, be adequate and choose wisely how to allocate the much-needed limited funds. And, and, and don't forget teacher training. The new technologies, uh, workforce programs again, and other online available programs can be used to provide our students the training they will need. And hopefully, it may find a fit in one of the interest arenas that will become a career focus for them, which facilitate, uh, their decision and, and hopefully, successful employment.
All right. Thank you, Hugh. That's time. And then Stephanie Walker?
Thank you. Yeah, um, well, we know how important, um, tech has been lately because we've relied on it for both education and, and working from home. Um, which, you know, I've done for the last decade. So I know how important it is to make sure your internet's working properly, uh, definitely. But the biggest thing that tech can do for our schools is really allow kids to customize learning that, for them. Cause I always look at things in terms of what's best for the child. And I know having two kids that are completely different learners, uh, will help with that. And I was actually asking them this yesterday. Like, if you had the chance to change how you, you went to school, would you do it? And my son, who has Asperger's, he, he basically was like, I would love to be able to do a hybrid kind of model. My daughter, who is really academically oriented, probably wouldn't want to do that. She'd want to be in class more, you know? So really, when it comes down to it, it's customizing education to the child. And I know right now that's not what we do. We kind of, we, we, we train them for the test and, you know, that brings all kind of other issues. And in the end, they're going to go on the path that they're going to go on. So customizing learning, tech will help with that so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, so I know all of you, um, were only able to share a little bit of what you wanted to. And, uh, Megan and I feel so bad about cutting you off sometimes in the middle of, of your thoughts and what you, uh, question, because it's not really a question. We're going to give you a little bit more time, two minutes per person. Um, and it is, um, a very open-ended question for you to share with us what you'd like to share. Really help the business community understand, um, why they should vote for you. Uh, so you've all each now had a chance to answer, um, one of the questions first, one last. We're going to go back to the beginning alphabetical order. And so Stephanie Crayville, uh, you get the first chance.
Thank you so much. Well, first of all, I'd like to start off with that I'm running for the Board of Education because I want to be on a team that makes New Hanover County Schools the place to be in the state of North Carolina and the place to be in our country. Uh, I am an industrial engineer from Virginia Tech. Go Hokies. Um, so efficiency is my jam. Um, with my industrial engineering degree, safety engineering was my minor. So safety is always forefront in everything that I do. To that effect, I joined the School Systems Crisis Management Team and the School Systems School Health Advisory Team, you know, many years ago, so that I could help to make an impact with my personal skills. I'm a team builder. I'm a collaborator. I'm an innovative outside-the-box thinker. I like to make things happen. I like to look for problems, or maybe not look for them. When I see problems, I like to work with them in a group setting, um, all the stakeholders in place to solve those problems. Um, I am an advocate of the Plan Do Check Act. I am an advocate of the Plan Do Check Act cycle, where we just get started, we do something, and then we check and see how we do. And then if we need to, you know, make a change on the fly, then we do it. So and and that has worked well for me in my career as a safety engineer and a risk manager. I am a PTA member. I've been a PTA member since, you know, my kids went to school back in the early two thousands. And through that, I have been able to meet parents and meet students and meet teachers and really understand, you know, what school is all about, in addition to having two of my own children that have gone through schools. So I'm a substitute teacher. So I've worked alongside the teachers and the principals in the school, really feeling their pain and celebrating in their successes. I'm uniquely, what I'll close with is, our sixth president of the United States, John Quincy Adams, said, if your actions inspire others to dream more, to learn more, to do more, and become more, then you are a leader. And I want to be that leader for New Hanover County Schools. I would be honored to receive your vote of confidence in me and receive your vote at the ballot box. Honor before November the third. Crable for kids.
Fabulous, Stephanie Crable, thank you very much for that. Pastor Tony McGee, it's now your thoughts and time, sir.
Well, thank you so much. This has been a great opportunity to share some concepts and ideas that I have. I think just a little bit about myself, I I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. And while I served in Marine Corps and I graduated from Marine Corps Computer Scientist School, when I was introduced a little bit to the concepts and ideas of critical thinking, and it completely changed my life and the path of my life professionally. I went on to develop IT career spanning twenty eight years. And Carter G. Woodson said something that I think is so important. He said, every person must receive at least two educations. The first one is the education somebody gives you, the second one is the one you give yourself. And so if you'll notice, all of my answers revolved around critical thinking. Why? Because if a student does not have the skills of critical thinking, it's going to be difficult, very difficult for them to give themselves the education that they need to give themselves in and out of the classroom to move forward in a different path that we expect our students to take. And so when we look at this, critical thinking is so important. A person has to be able to ask a question, answer a question, have a conversation in their mind about that, and be able to make a decision. Well, with critical thinking, you minimize the idea of emotionalism, emotionalism and emoting about a particular thing, but actually clarifying what the process is, what the options are, and then moving forward. And so, you know, I ask everybody to vote for me because this is a heartfelt thing for me to say, listen, we have to teach our our kids to think. And if they can think, they'll master the information, they'll master the concepts, they're supporting the information, and they'll be the better for it. And they'll and they'll be successful in whatever path that they think that they take. So thank you so much. Vote for Tony McGee.
All right, Tony, thank you for those thoughts. Hugh McManus, how about you? What are your thoughts on this closing question?
Thank you. We are in a crisis where economically, health wise, and in particular, education. Where virtual classes work for some students, it's still not working for students who don't have technology or their guardians don't understand how to use technology, or there's absolutely no adult supervision because they're going to work or for other reasons. And maybe in some cases, they have all three problems. This is our biggest challenge. This is our focus. I'm adding that to President and ever increasing demand for the technical vocational skill workers, which I've ride this one out, is a high priority. It's less debt, stronger pay scale now, and benefits. We need to add, again, to each of our high schools a workforce development program. I truly believe that it's a benefit. Technology growth is there, it's increased available online classes and programs. The kids can maximize. I'll continue to advocate for support and the reinvention of remediation where necessary. We got to get out of box. In some cases, we got to be totally in a situation to reinvent how we approach our students and the learning process. We need the students in school. Obviously, safety is a key driver. I'm running for the school board as well. Obviously, I want to give back. I want to be part of the academic success, and I still want a strong workforce development program. The Board of Ed should not be a political area, folks. It's got to be what's best for all students. It's got to include full inclusion, it's got to include safety. I thank you for your vote. I thank you for listening. Please check out my website, McManus for School Board. And remember, everything we do, intended or not, is a deposit or withdrawal. And we need to focus on the deposits. And I wish I was on camera because I finally put a sign behind me.
All right, Hugh McManus, thank you very much for those closing thoughts. Stephanie Walker.
Thank you. I grew up here, raised my kids here. I've been a member of this community for a very long time. I serve on several different commissions and committees. I've been, so I'm pretty much invested in my community. And I really want to make our school system a lot stronger because we all know that a strong school system is a win win situation for us, for our kids, for our economy. And it's going to attract business and people. So that's that's really the bottom line. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, I want to do everything I can to make it stronger. I have a background in, my degree is an MPA, which is Public Administration. And I look at, besides child advocacy, I look at things in that light, very much policy oriented and looking at the effects of policy and what that's going to do to our community. And I feel like I could strengthen that up in on our school board, definitely. Let's see, you know, I believe, like I said earlier, I believe kids, both my kids are completely different. And I, as well, was a completely different learner. And I understand that children are going to, you know, take a path that's best for them. But we need to strengthen, there are a lot of holes in our system right now as far as equity is concerned. And that that's really why I'm here now running for school board. I I did a capstone paper on this subject. And it it kind of made me angry because I realized that I don't believe people, and like Hugh said, that it's been politicized. And I don't think schools should be politicized. I think anything that helps our children learn and become successful citizens is what we need to to work on. And I think if your motivation for running or being on a school board is something different, you shouldn't do it. So I really believe I'm ready to do that. And should I get on, I'm going to really work hard to to, you know, get a good strategic plan in place, to really look at where we are and where we need to be, you know, in the next ten, fifteen years. And really, the bottom line is is what's best for children. So my website should be in the chat, stephwalkerforschools.com, and just get in touch with me if you need to know more. Thank you.
All right, Stephanie Walker, thank you. And Pete Wilderbohr.
I want to close by thanking everyone for their time today. The question I would like to answer is, what will I bring to the board? Thirty four years of proven leadership. I've been a leader from pre K all the way up to the early college level. I've been principal of the year, assistant principal, teacher, coach, athletic director in three different county systems and in two different states. I was a leader in the classroom, on the field, and with your help in the Board of Education. I've had three children go through the the system. And as Steph Walker was mentioning, very different children. One was valedictorian at Laney High School. I had a child that had learning disabilities. So I I'm an advocate for all our children. Every single child can learn, every child, every single child needs to learn. I think it's it's vital we do everything we can. We have good resources in New Hanover County Schools. We have great teachers, we have great students. We need to do everything we possibly can to catch them up after this pandemic. This has been crazy. One of my wonderful assistant principals sent me a quote that I'd like to close with. Living for others is a rule of nature. We have, we are all here to help each other no matter how difficult it is. Life is good when you are happy, but much better when others are happy because of you. If you will vote for me, I would appreciate that. Remember, wilderbohrforeducation.com. Please come check it out, learn more about me, and I would love your vote, honor before November third. Thank you.
All right, well, Stephanie, Stephanie, Tony, Pete, Hugh. For me, it was an absolute pleasure to get to know the five of you better. I wish there were five slots on the ballot versus just three slots on the ballot. I could really tell that all five of you have a genuine passion for education and for doing all that you can for the youth in our community. Most definitely, with this pandemic and all that those kids have had to go through since March, we're going to have a lot of catching up to do. So I appreciate your willingness to put yourself out there to be able to do all that we can for our education system in New Hanover County. So thank you. The next month, the Public Policy Committee is going to have a chance to be able to hear from our House of Representative candidates. So if you haven't had a chance to register for that event, please go ahead and do that so that you can attend. And then also, as a reminder, please vote. There are three different ways that you can vote. You can request an absentee ballot. You can do early voting. It runs from October fifteenth till October thirty first. There are nine different locations throughout New Hanover County. One thousand four hundred and eighty five hours of open time slots that you could go to throughout those locations. And Election Day is Tuesday, November third. So you can wait and trust you as well. So please, with that many opportunities to vote, please get out there and make your voice heard. I'd like to, once again, thank our co hosts today. BASE, Greater Wilmington Business Journal, Wilmington Cape Fear Home Builders Association, and the Cape Fear Realtors. Natalie, any closing thoughts from you before we end? All right, I hope everyone has an amazing first day of fall. And I'm looking forward to the cool weather staying, but hopefully skies remain blue and no more hurricanes. Hopefully, that's over. All right. Take care.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.